Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting. It's Monday, March the 6th, 2017. At this time, I will call the meeting toward, and we will be led in prayer by Lieutenant Kenyon Civiles of the Salvation Army.
Let's pray. In the scriptures, Jesus frequently says to the crowds, "He who has eyes to see, let him see; they who have ears to hear, let them hear." Father, we pray, right now, for the City Council, for the folks in these chambers, Lord, for the business that will be conducted. Lord, we pray that all who are present would have eyes to see you, that they would have ears to hear you. Lord, we pray that our leaders would be guided by those principles, that they would be guided by you, that they are seeking you and listening to you for what you have for them and for our town. Lord, we are grateful for them. We pray your blessing on them. We pray your blessing on this evening and all that is discussed in Christ, and we pray. Amen.
Thanks, Kenyon. Shelley, you want to do a roll call for us?
I can. Albertson? Bueller? Danforth, absent. Manti, absent. Reifenberg, absent. Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson?
Here.
Tepper?
Here.
Vilhauer? Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Okay, at this time, I'll look for a motion in a second for approval of consent agenda for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Glenn. Any questions, any changes on our consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, approval of the agenda. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by Bruce. Any questions, changes anybody has? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, Urban Renewal District, 2016 Annual Report of Finance and Activities. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by John. Randy, do you want to?
We actually don't, we don't need to take any action on it.
Oh, okay, well, forget that. Yeah, we're action-packed. We just need to get things moving. All right, Randy, you want to give us a little update on that?
I will give you kind of a brief overview. The Board convened a total of three meetings in February. Primary purpose for reviewing and approving revolving loan applications as well as discussing the final charrette report. Action was taken by the Board in April to accept the endorsement of MSH charrette report and refer the report to URB recommendations to the City Council. Just, I'm just going to highlight a few things that is in your packet. At the beginning of the process of finalization, five recommendations were suggested in the final charrette report, and those areas are as focused parking in streets, land use design and management, neighborhoods, downtown housing, retail employment, and open spaces. Like I say, I'm just going to give you a couple quick highlights on that. We do, we have been working forward with the, turning these streets back to one-way, or two-way, excuse me, and we are working forward on First Avenue. Presently, there are six loans out to businesses totaling $24,435,000, or, excuse me, $24,435, none are in arrears and all are secured, and approximately $105,500 is available for additional loans. And if anybody wants to see the financials, they can refer to the attachments, so.
Okay. Any questions for Randy? Randy, who are some of the board members?
Myself, Dan, Beth, and Nancy Turbeck. We do have one open seat as of now.
Any other questions? Thanks, Randy. Number three, Urban Renewal District. Oh, that's the one I just did. Presentation of the preliminary 2016 city financial report. Shelley, you want to handle that for us?
I can. I will be very brief. Per state statute, we are required to provide the governing body with financial statements at the first meeting in March. The financial statements that we provide are very brief for two reasons. One, they're preliminary, they have not been audited, so these are just kind of our first round, and they haven't been looked at yet. Also, we send out what we call a full CAFER, which is a comprehensive annual financial report, once the audit is complete, and we send that to the GFOA for our awards program, and that is available online. It's available to anybody who wants one, and it's also provided to the City Council. So, we can provide a more brief set of financial statements than maybe some other communities who don't have an annual audit or who don't complete a full CAFER such as Watertown, so that's why you're seeing these. I'm just going to point out just a couple little things if anybody would look and question. On the general fund, you'll see the increase/decrease in fund balance. Part of that was anticipated in the 2016 budget. If you remember, we did anticipate spending about $457,000 for some larger pieces of equipment that needed replacing in the street department and the snow removal. The reason why it exceeded that is basically the supplement that was approved for 2016 was approximately $870,000 from the original budget, and even though our revenues exceeded what we budgeted, they didn't over exceed to the point of what we supplemented. So, some additional dollars did come out of our fund balance because of those supplements. So, that's why you're seeing that, and we still have a very healthy unassigned fund balance, so there's no worries about cutting back or, you know, sales tax dollars that haven't seen a lot of increases, that have just kind of stayed flat for 2016, starting in 2017. So, just, so you're aware of that. In Fund 212, also, because of the carryovers, there was excess in 2015 in the fund balance because some of those projects had not been started or completed. Those were done in 2016, which caused some of that fund balance to be used. So, that also is very common to have excess one year, deficit the next, because projects flow through in between years. Also, the capital projects, if anybody sees that, don't get alarmed, that's anticipated, that's our $30 million worth of bonds being spent down for those three projects. We're not, you know, we received the bonds all in one year, spent them in subsequent years, so you're going to see that big deficit. That was also anticipated. If you see the total long-term debt on the first page, that is what the second penny is repaying, that's all in the governmental fund, and that reflects the $30 million of bonds that we did in the last couple of years. If you look at the second page on the proprietary funds, these are extremely preliminary because we're not 100% finished doing our capital asset valuation, so we had to do some estimates. So, I will just tell you right off the bat, these numbers will change from final numbers. But, we're required to do them, so we do our best at estimating those. It also shows you on the bottom, the long-term debt per fund that each fund's user fees are repaying, and there's two of those. The last part of this that we're required to show is what our cash is at the end of the year, and then what depositories are holding those funds. And, of course, Great Western Bank has the majority of that because they hold our pooled fund account, our checking account, basically, and then the rest of them are holding those in CDs. So, if you have any questions, I can sure answer them. There's no action that's taken, it's just something that we, that we need to give you to kind of show you an estimation of how 2016 went, and we'll give you the full report once we have our audit completed in June.
Shelley, you've said that we're in good shape, and it certainly looks like that, but do you see any yellow flags out there, anything that, over the horizon, that concerns you?
I, I don't. 2017, we did not anticipate using any fund balance. We're just starting to see some sales tax dollars kind of come in on 2017. They haven't, I haven't seen any, it's only a couple months in, but we haven't seen any other significant drops in there, and we did budget conservatively on that sales tax side as well, so, no, at this point, I really, I don't see any yellow flags.
Any other questions for Shelley? Hearing none, I guess we'll move on. Yes, thank you very much. Number five, application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-sale liquor license from Prairie Winds Golf LLC, doing business as Prairie Winds Golf at 555 South Lake Drive to Lakeside Harry's LLC, doing business as Harry's at Prairie Winds at the same location. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I will look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by John. Any question that you have on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, Sunday Liquor Sales License to Lakeside Harry's LLC, doing business as Harry's at Prairie Winds at 555 South Lake Drive for the 2017 calendar year. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion.
Move.
Motion by Randy, second by Dan. Any questions, any concerns? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, application for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage license and retail on-off sale wine license from Tokyo Japanese Cuisine of SP Inc., doing business as Tokyo Japanese Cuisine at 521 Ninth Avenue Southeast to Tokyo TWF LLC, doing business as Tokyo Japanese Cuisine at the same location. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Glenn, second by Don. Any questions on this? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes.
The new owners are here too, by the way.
I've seen that.
They just moved to Watertown, and so...
From Pennsylvania. You guys want to come up and say a couple words? Come on up to the speaker. Yeah. This is your, you should have brought a big sign, "Eat at Tokyo Cuisine." Yeah, you should have.
Because you know that, because owner here, only us is the issue.
Well, go ahead. Go ahead, you're fine.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. We enjoy the facility there.
If you have a chance, you guys can come to us in the restaurant, and you can try some sous vide.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, guys. All right, bye-bye. Okay, moving on. Number eight, second reading of ordinance number 1702, amending Title 21, other revised ordinance of the City of Watertown, remove zoning restrictions on casino or gambling establishment locations. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll look for council, for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Brad. Maybe Justin, you should run it by us one more time.
I'd be happy to, Mayor, thank you. You will recall that our ordinances provide that a casino or gambling establishment, i.e. a place that offers video lottery, is required to have a conditional use permit in the C1, C2, C3 zoning districts within the City of Watertown and is excluded outright, has an excluded use, in the city's gateway overlay district. The ordinance here proposes to do away with those zoning distinctions as a result of the 2011 South Dakota Supreme Court case of law versus the city of Sioux Falls, wherein the court held that the state occupies the field of regulation for gambling establishments, and so prohibits zoning ordinances from being able to uniquely exclude gambling establishments. As I point out in the memo, the court did note that the city is still empowered to zone and dictate where alcohol beverage establishments may or may not be located, and since the gambling or video lottery certification is wholly dependent upon that alcohol license, the planning commission for the City of Watertown, as well as the City Council, is able to regulate the location and the licensing of the alcohol, and ergo is able to regulate the location and licensing of the gambling establishment.
Any questions for, for Justin on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine, ordinance number 1705, amending section 7.1604, other revised ordinance of the City of Watertown, reflect new officer election month for the Upper Big Sioux Watershed Board. At this, this is a second reading, and I will be looking for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Randy, second by Bruce. Justin, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. So, this ordinance, very straightforward, just reflects what the Upper Big Sioux Watershed Board decided at its January meeting to change the month of the election, or the month of the meeting at which they elect their officers, and the reason why it's changed in ordinance is because it's in ordinance, and so this ordinance is meant to reflect that change.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, ordinance number 1706, repealing sections 19.1408 and 19.1408A of the revised ordinance of the City of Watertown for being statutorily prohibited firearms regulations. This is also a second reading, and I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce, second by Glenn. Justin, you want to fill us in on this one?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. The reason why this ordinance is before you is because of South Dakota Codified Law 9-19-20, which was adopted in 1983 and reads as follows, "No municipality may pass any ordinance that restricts possession, transportation, sale, transfer, ownership, manufacture, or repair of firearms, or ammunition, or their components. Any ordinances prohibited by this section are null and void," end quote. The two provisions in our ordinances that this ordinance seeks to repeal are possession ordinances relating to firearms, and so for that reason would be void by, or are void by SDCL 9-19-20. We do have one provision for the discharge of firearms. That would stay on the books and is still a valid ordinance for discharge within the city limits, but this would just eliminate these two ordinances. As I mentioned at the first reading, the ordinance regarding the carrying of firearms on an off-road vehicle, that is effectively already prohibited by state statute, and the ordinance regarding carrying the firearm on a golf cart, it would appear that the city did not have the authority to enact that provision in the first place based on what state law allows for us to regulate in terms of golf carts.
Okay, any questions for Justin on this? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Justin. Number 11, New Venture Third Edition Annexation and Zoning. We'll take the annexation first, huh, Shane?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Put my screen up on the thing. Okay, thank you. The area in the Red Hatch is the remaining portion of Rogers Outlet Number Two, which is intended to be annexed into the city by petitioner Bill Folkerts, doing business as Vernert's Investments. This parcel, or the development that he's proposing includes this parcel, which would need to be annexed before we could take any further action on, on his property. So, with that, I'll leave it brief, and what he's asking for is the council to consider passing Resolution 1706 regarding annexation.
Okay, thanks, Shane. So, what I'll do is I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion.
So, move.
Motion by Dan, second by Bruce. Any questions yet for Shane? Hearing none, I will look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second, reading of ordinance number 1708, amending zoning district boundaries by zoning New Venture Third Edition to C3 Highway Commercial District. At this time, I will open the public hearing, and if there's anybody that wants to speak in favor of or against this, this is your opportunity. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I'll look for a motion in a second for discussion, and then we'll turn over Shane for a minute. Motion by Randy, second by Glenn. Shane, you want to take this?
Okay, yep, and this, this action that you're considering now is directly related to the annexation that you just passed tonight. When we annex property into the community, we also must zone it, so this requires a zoning, and the petitioner has requested that we be consistent with the remaining, or the remainder of the properties adjoining to it within the city limits, which is C3, and that proposed, as we understand it, the proposed use would be consistent with that zoning.
Okay, any questions for Shane?
Just a comment, both the annexation and the zoning came through the planning commission without any objections, correct?
Correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll look for council action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number 12, first reading of ordinance number 17-11, amending zoning district boundaries by rezoning Gilbert's Edition from an R4 manufactured homes residential district to R3 multifamily residential district. And this is a first reading. Shane, you want to give us a little update on what's going on?
Sure. LATI has a project that's, they are proposing for this area bordered by 11th Street Northeast and Arrow Avenue Northeast, and the other portion is the abandoned railroad way through the community there. It was zoned, R4, or, excuse me, it was zoned for multifamily housing with regard to, that it had trailer houses and a trailer court there. So, the school wants to update the zoning to be consistent with the R3 district that they, rest of their facility is on, so that they have a conditional use to build a building in there if, once this zoning is passed.
Any questions while we're still on first reading for Shane on that?
Are there any mobile homes left there? Are they all out?
They're all gone.
Okay, let's move on. Number 13, first reading of ordinance number 1712, amending section 21.2303 in chapter 21.90 of the revised ordinances of the City of Watertown regarding RG Residential Garage District. Again, this is first reading, and Shane, if you want to fill us in on what's going on here.
Yeah, the planning commissioners brought this topic up to staff, and so staff did some research as to how it would impact or be laid out for the community, and I just handed out, handout to you prior to the meeting that has some minor revisions from what was in your packet. Primarily, the revisions are under two, item two for structure, we added a line J, which would read as such, "Maximum pitch and height shall not exceed 30 feet." We, if we increased the sidewall distance from 10 to 16, we also needed to change the overall height of the building, which previously would be 24, and amended would be 30. So, we wanted to reflect that the maximum height should also adjust along with the sidewall height. And, we did have a substantial discussion about the look and the feel of this structure, so that's why there's, we did include some language and a, and a visual piece to the ordinance showing what we call articulated sidewall piece, and with that, I'll leave it, if you have any questions.
Any questions for Shane on this?
Shane, the only one I got is, and maybe it's covered under prohibited uses, so the person that, this is basically for somebody owns like two lots, and they want to build a garage on one, and the properties on the other, or a vacant lot, I guess, would, would be the same thing.
This would only apply to the RG districts, so it would either have to be a previously existing RG district, or someone would have to rezone an area into RG, and then these ordinances would apply.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Shane. Number 14, consideration of purchase offer for the north end of the auditorium parking lot from Cottington County. At this time, I think what I'll do, I see Lee, you're in the, in the audience? Sure, come on up. Just give us a little idea of what's going on here, and we'll see where the council takes. Of course, this is only their first look at it, we'll see where it goes.
And, in case you don't know, Megan Olson is the, she's the vice chairman of the Justice Advisory Committee, so she's involved in this project.
Perfect, and I didn't even ask her to pray tonight.
I owe you an ice cream cone for that. That's why I came in at like 7:05.
All right, thanks, Megan. You're okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, just, thank you for the willingness to, on the part of the city, to talk about this. You know, this is a situation where the city and the county, both jurisdictions need to work together. And obviously, with that offer, you know, that, I think, reflects the fact that both jurisdictions have their, their fiscal considerations and responsibilities that we need to look after. So, to get down to where we're really talking about, how do we come up with that, that number? Is that, if I'm guessing, that might be your question. So, the, the, well, the appraisal, as you know, was $462,000, something, so, by Johnson Appraisals, and then we offered $262,000, and where that comes from, it's kind of a, I realize it's a broad estimate to do the, the fill correction. So, what, what we saw, and we appreciate the city letting us do some soil borings there, but what we saw on the, the soil borings was that there's some, some fill there from the basements of the buildings that existed on those sites, and so that has to be corrected. And so, that's what we're, that's what we're asking for the city to consider. And where that, basically, $200,000 less off the, the appraised price comes from is simply splitting down the middle between the, the low end and the high end of that estimate. So, I realize that it's a broad estimate, but that's how we came up with that one.
And I will tell you, I did not talk to the appraiser, which I apologize, I should have, to see if he took into consideration that, that existing building that was there at the time. I did not get that done. I'm sorry.
Can I interject? I, I did talk to Mr. Johnson, Brad Johnson, the appraiser, this morning. He, he said the appraisal was done essentially as, as a parking lot, so he did not account for what the underlying, you know, issues may be into. So, that's what Brad conveyed to me this morning. I've got a couple of questions for, for Lee or Megan. I want to make sure I understand, this also, the, the legal here does include the land on First Avenue that extends to the west across the alley, is that?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And also with the vacation valley?
Well, yeah. Yeah, I have a, I don't know if you can show this overhead here, I don't know if, it's black and white, so, I can trace with my fingers, so, yeah, the city, city property, this, there's some highlighting on here that's not really helpful at the moment, but the, the way I understand it is basically the, the property is this, and then the alley is just something that would have to be vacated if, if necessary, and then the rest is obviously that part there, so the, and the...
So, the white triangle you see is actually future expansion.
Yeah, so that's where, if you had to do something like that down the road, you'd, you'd be looking at having to vacate a part of that alley. Does that make sense?
So, one question I do have for you, Lee, and, and thanks for all the hard work you've put in here, but it was kind of brought to my attention the other day was, right now that parking lot's used a lot by the city and the county, and residents live downtown, but also by some of the prisoners that are on work release program, or some of the prisoners that are, say they're sentenced there for 30 days. Where do you expect that parking to go?
Yeah, I think the city deserves a lot of credit in going, in doing a good job of finding parking spaces all throughout the downtown, so I think if folks are willing to walk a couple blocks, that problem... to walk a couple of blocks, um, that problem, uh, will mostly go away, I mean, the overall number of, obviously this is going to take up some of the parking spaces downtown, um, one thing I should, so, I think, I think that kind of answers the question, I think, I think there's a lot of, overall, there's a lot of good, uh, you know, reasonable parking, both on the street and in the little parking lots that you find behind the, behind the buildings and businesses throughout downtown. Um, the other thing I would add is, um, going back to the city charrette, this is also a place, this is the place that was, uh, um, mentioned a few times in that charrette as the place for justice facilities, was this parking lot, so, I, it's, there seems to be a desire on the part of the community to, to keep it downtown, um, for, in, in addition to just being a spacious spot, it's also right next to the courthouse, so it's a good spot for this purpose.
Right, now there's a number of county vehicles that are parked there, I mean, where would you envision that they're going to go to in the meantime?
Well, that, yeah, they would have to park on the streets some, I mean, they'd have to find other parking, there is, uh, if we move, one of the, the current version of the project has us move the, uh, the sheriff's office over to where, where this location would be, so that would move some of the sheriff's vehicles over there, so it wouldn't be every, there'd be some need to, to find some parking spots on the street, to be quite honest, but, uh, but it would, uh, there'd be a few extra parking spaces behind the courthouse as well.
Yep.
How, how, I guess I'm not quite understanding the, the drawing there, how, how close up to the auditorium, uh, i- is, is, does this legal take us?
Yeah, the, the legal goes, um, it's probably a few feet, this is not a legal, this is a footprint, I brought this drawing along to show where the boring locations were, um, so, the, the legal description is within a few feet, I'm not exactly sure how close it is, but the, 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 uh, the auditorium is on one plat, and then, or a couple plats, and that's separate from the plats, the various plats for the parking lot.
Shane, could you put that up on the screen for us?
I do have it on my screen.
I thought you did.
Lee, again, that's not a final drawing, but, where will the auditorium people park? If that was to go there? It looks like it's going to go, take it, take it all the way up to the auditorium building?
Yeah, if you guys just look on that, on the screen right there, I think Shane has the, uh, right next to his blue queue, it kind of shows the, the lot line, it's, it's pretty darn, pretty darn close to the, uh, auditorium right now, as we see that.
Yeah, it'd be very close.
I, I would say that, if you go up there at night, that the auditorium is even busy, majority of the parking is on the street, and it's with the opening of the new, uh, Pearly Lake Wellness Center, you'll see, like, less activity going on in the city auditorium also, so.
I would tend to agree, I think we'll see that movement shift dramatically here in the next month or so, um, and fully understand that probably when those county vehicles are out and about, that operation of the auditorium, they're probably on flip times or opposite times, so hopefully that, that works out.
How, how critical is the timing of this, are you, you've got a, it's going to be, this will be voted on as part of our, uh, city school election coming up in June. How, how soon do you need an answer from us? I, I, I'm not sure I'm ready to commit myself to carrying through with this, uh, tonight, also we're missing three council members, which is no fault of yours. I, I, I'd like to see us table this and get a little more information and have a whole, whole body here, but at the same time, we don't want to be holding, holding your work up if, if we don't act on this. I'm just concerned that if we act on it, and let's say we turn it down, what kind of message that can be sending, uh, to the, to the community or to the county? So, I, I guess I'd like some, some comments from you as far as, you know, how critical the timing is on this.
Well, it's, obviously the sooner the better, because that allows us to move forward with an option and, and public awareness for it, so we can say exactly what we plan to do to the voters, so they can be learning and thinking and considering things, um, just being informed, so, the sooner the better. Um, as far as the exact deadline, um, that, I can't, I don't know off the top of my head, but, it, it, that will have an app, impact on, uh, early voting and absentee voting, so if we take, we don't want to take it down to the wire, obviously, so, I would say, if we could figure this out in the month of March, that would be wonderful.
Glenn, I just want to clarify, uh, your answer, or your, the answer to your question, this area that I'm outlining here on the drawing appears to not be in the legal description that they've included, so these two areas that encompass this parking lot are not included in this at this time.
Yeah, that, that would surprise me.
I mean, that, that would be critical for your expansion for those lots.
Well, I think they would have to utilize that as parking as well, so, it'd probably be shared parking between their facility and the auditorium.
If, if that's the case, that's not what we intended, we went, we used the legal description from the appraisal, that I, and I, and when, if you look at what Brad Johnson drew in the, uh, in his appraisal document, I mean, it covers, it covers all of that, so, when I checked with the, the Department of Equalization and, uh, and the appraisal, uh, we definitely mean for that to cover all the way to that, to that line, uh, next to the auditorium. So, we can, we can go back and verify that, but that's, we, we checked, we matched up with what was in the appraisal.
Yeah, it'd be a pretty important thing to know.
I think we need to take a really long look at whether or not we need that parking, and I know you say, well, park in front of the businesses, or park a couple of blocks, you know, down by the Bar Street, down there, the, uh, but I don't know, that, to me, that's a really, I've driven by there several times since this has come up, and that parking lot is nearly full every day, and, and I'm trying to be sympathetic to your, your plan there, I really am, because, but it's, it's really a valuable piece of parking property right now, and I, I'm not sure where they're going to go, we don't have a, our parking downtown is really an issue right now, and to take a big lot like this, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm concerned about it, I think we should explore a little more as to where they would go, because I don't think people want people to go park in front of their businesses, you know, they'd say, take the shortest route, so you go up by Gary Young and Redlingers and all these, and have all these cars parked up there. I don't think he's going to, I don't think they'd jump at that chance to have, then they wouldn't have any place to park, because these cars would be there all day, from seven forty-five to five fifteen, and they'd take the shortest place, I think, along there and, you know, any of those businesses, so, I, I think we really need to take a long look at this before we close down a parking lot, and I know you need the area, I know that.
I, I, I want to see this project get done, I mean, I, I've gone on the record of, in that regard, a couple of different times, but I'm just not ready to make commitments on that, I guess, procedurally, what are we doing, I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, table this.
If, if I may, I, I do think that, uh, you mentioned it yourself, that you really need to go back to Brad and see if that's, uh, if that was included in his appraisal. My guess is it was, but maybe it was left out.
If there's a doubt, we should, we should do that, I was going by what was, what was written in appraisal.
So, so I would, I would tend to agree, at this particular junction, we need to find that out, and I would agree with Glenn, to probably table this until we find out, further information on that.
Because even, even if we were to sell this, and we needed to get more parking to offset this, I mean, parking space, if that was quoted at a half a million for parking, it would cost us that much to get parking that size again, I mean, that's the way I see it.
So, guys, I do have a motion on the floor of tabling this, uh, for, for their information.
I'll second that.
And I have a second by Randy, any other discussion on this?
No, no more discussion.
No more? Hold for the table. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, I think that's a good thing, it's just happened to come up like that, Lee, so, uh, let's do it.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Okay, number fifteen, authorization for the, um, mayor to sign a professional service agreement with Austin Engineering for engineering services on the miscellaneous drainage and street repair project in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Don. Motion by Bruce, you guys scared me, scared me to death there, I almost had to go get a blood pressure pill or something, I, so Shane, if you want to, you want to tell us what's going on?
Thank you, Mayor, um, the city staff is, you know, we're, we have our hands full, so we, we recognized in about a month ago that we would need a little bit of assistance with the project, and, a portion of this project that I'm, uh, offering up for engineering services has previously been, um, included in a design by Austin Engineering, so it seemed like a very good fit for them to not only finish the work that they had proposed for the city, um, previously, but then we expanded the project a little bit, and, um, what, I'll quick drive here to where, where the work is. So, right now, we have, um, the proposal is to improve this little portion of Fifteenth Street, just south of Fourteenth Avenue, and into the intersection of Twelfth Street and Seventeenth Street Northeast, uh, there's some drainage issues, obviously, there's some pavement, um, issues as well, so that's a, a portion of it. The other portion of the project would improve the drainage provisions in the intersection of Berth, Birch and Twentieth Street Northeast, and then, in that same part of town, we have had some settlements due to a, um, previous storm sewer project along Eleventh Avenue here between Eleventh Street and Thirteenth Street, so, that's the scope of the project, we're just going to ask them for assistance in preparing the, uh, enduring plans and specifications so that we can take it to bid, and then, once we reach that point, city staff will do the, um, construction management portion of the project, so, with that, I guess, uh, we're asking for assistance from Austin Engineering on this project, and asking the council to approve, uh, engineering services to provide that.
Any questions you guys have for Shane?
Actually, I, I do, I mean, I, I drove the, those areas, they may, I don't argue that they need work on, I guess my question is, how, I mean, I could probably, we could probably all find probably dozens of areas in town that are as bad as or worse than these, I mean, how were these selected, or why?
These have been on, uh, on the li- project list for multiple years, so, we decided that, since they were on the list longer, that they would be addressed sooner, now, also I have, uh, I can do this within my annual budget, lo- many of the projects that we have that are similar to this would take a larger budget, and we would have to address that through our, um, annual budgeting process.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number sixteen, authorization for the mayor to sign the two thousand and sixteen annual MS four report regarding storm water discharge. At this time, I'll look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Don, second by Bruce. Shane, you want to give us just another little update on this, you, you did have a long discussion on the, uh, work session about this also.
Right, okay, so, the brief version, um, of course, we would encourage those people that have questions on the MS four program to review the, uh, the work session as it's replayed, I, on the city website, but, annually, we are required to, uh, complete a re- annual report for our, the D E N R, who administrates the MS four program within the state of South Dakota, and, this is our annual report that we need to request for you to sign and submit to the state, to stay in compliance.
Okay, any questions for Shane? Hearing none, I'll look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number seventeen, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement with the South Dakota DOT for assignment of right of entry for parcels related to the North Bypass Project. This is something that is just kind of a house cleaning issue for you guys, I will look for a motion and a second for discussion.
I will.
Motion by Randy. Second by Brad, and, uh, Shane, you want to kind of give us that housekeeping on that, because we had gone through most of this months ago.
Yeah, about exactly one year ago, in fact, we brought before the council the purchase of some of the right of way that, uh, was going to encompass or include the North Bypass, uh, from, uh, you know, basically the Highway eighty-one intersection of, with the interstate was going to extend westerly across town and ultimately connect to Highway twenty, that project had been subsequently abandoned by the DOT, and they offered the real estate that they had purchased from adjoining landowners to encompass that project to the city, and, last year, we agreed to, uh, pay seventy thousand dollars for that, and, in that agreement, it also tied us to, um, receiving the right of entry documents, and, I interpreted that, that when we passed that, that we actually approved it all, and, and so, when I got the ultimate right of entry document from, uh, the state, I had the mayor sign it, and we submitted it, and they were looking for, uh, council minutes to support that, and I thought we already had that, um, apparently, they wanted some more specific language, and so, we're bringing this before you to, uh, ratify that decision and the signature for the right of entry documents.
No dollars involved.
No dollars.
Any questions for Shane on this? Hearing none, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number eighteen, consideration of bids received for the sanitary sewer replacement project, I will, uh, look for a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by Bruce. Second by Glenn, Shane, if you want to, uh, handle that for us.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, this year's project is a rehabilitation project, which means we slip line sanitary sewer, um, mains, and we also, uh, do some manhole work, where we line or, or refinish the insides of manhole structures. This year's project, we, we did have a annual, or, the wastewater plant has, uh, an annual budget of three hundred and twenty-five thousand, uh, they didn't present enough, a large enough project for us to use up their full allotment of money, but, uh, we did go to bids and receive two bids for the project, one by Hydro Clean LLC in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents, and the other one was by H and W Contracting in the amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents, so.
Can you, uh, put that up on the screen for Shane?
Just a second. There's the copy of the bid tab. Again, the low bid was submitted by Hydro Clean LLC in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and thirty cents, our engineer's estimate was two hundred thousand, but there's more than enough money in the budget item to cover, um, this project, so, with that, I recommend a ward.
Any questions on that, are you guys okay with that, or do you want to see where it's going to go, anything like that, you're right? Very good, I will look for council action, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number nineteen, consideration of change order number one to the contract with Hydro Clean LLC for the sanitary sewer replacement project, reducing the contract amount twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty-two cents. At this time, I'll look for a, uh, a motion and a second for discussion. Motion by John. Second by Dan. Shane, if you want to fill us in on this.
Okay, so, the project that you just awarded, this is directly related to that, and what we did was we found an anomaly in the bids, and we couldn't do the change order or correct those anomaly until you made a ward, so, that's why this is a little bit awkward, but it's the right steps, um, as identified by Justin, so, anyway, the bidder, Hydro Clean LLC, had inadvertently swapped two bit, unit prices around, in other words, they had a, a sixty-five dollar, um, item, or unit price that was intended for gravel, and a four hundred and seventy-two dollar item intended for asphalt patching, they had flipped those around to where we would have been paying four hundred and seventy-two do- dollars per, for a ton of gravel, and, of course, only gravel that's laced with a lot of gold and other minerals would be worth that kind of material, so, we've, did visit with them, and they clearly showed us where that, uh, mistake was made, and so this change order rectifies that mistake. We do recommend a ward.
Quick question, I, I think I know the answer, but, this doesn't in any way compromise the bidding process, we're not at an issue with that?
Nope, i- in fact, it, it can't, it's not even possible to, um, in, change the outcome of the bidding procedure.
So, in other words, your, your, um, estimate of two hundred thousand dollars, and it was at two oh- So, in other words, your estimate of two hundred thousand dollars, and it was at two oh seven, you're really five thousand under, is what you're saying?
You're correct.
Very good.
Thanks for the kudos there.
Nice. Okay. So, if there's no more questions, I'll look for council action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number twenty, is there any old business that we need to talk about?
I got a quick one. Both Alderman and Danforth and I keep bringing up the Cherry Creek Drive thing, because it's been hanging out there. We keep getting questions about it. I know there's been some things that have come out with the EPA that make that a little more difficult than just getting it done. I'm just going to request that we send out an email update to all the residents that were here at those preceding meetings. We got, I had good attendance at those meetings. I just think we owe them an answer. We keep getting questions about it. I'd like to get an update via email to those folks.
I thought I seen we had a meeting lined up, or?
That meeting is for staff and the council liaisons regarding that issue, not the general public. But, I can send out an update.
Yeah, when is that? When's that meeting?
We're still waiting for final weigh-in on the date and time, but I'm hoping it can be next week.
Yeah, I think, I would agree with you, Don, that it needs to be updated sooner than later. Any other old business?
I got one. I know, Mayor, you've gotten a lot of input on the ICE facility. A lot of things are coming up, and that's kind of coming to a head here, I think, there. Is that something we should do at a work session? Show that drawing and go through that and show the public what we're looking at with that? Because I know we're coming down, kind of down to final, final on that.
We are. In fact, just to let you know, the, one of the very final drawings just came in this morning about eleven o'clock. And I will be showing that too. We've had numerous people from the Hockey Association, the Figure Skaters, have all had just lots of input on that. We've been to Sioux Falls with the RS Architects, and they've had that input. It's actually coming along very, very well. We will be bringing that forward to show you what it's going to look like. In fact, Thursday at the Bisco, I will be showing it there also, what's going on. And then, we will bring it in front of you, because the CMAR is ready to go out to get the GMPs on that. So, it's exciting. So, we're going to see where that goes. Pretty excited about it, yeah. That's a good thing. Any other questions?
Mayor, you might want to explain what all those acronyms mean. CMAR and the GMP for the public.
I'm sorry. The CMAR is the Construction Manager at Risk, who will then go out and get the guaranteed maximum price on the facility. So, we'll know exactly how much it would cost, and they will be at risk for it if it goes over. Anything else? Any new business that we need to discuss?
Actually, Mayor, I would guess this is probably new business. Are we, is H two O twenty going to be doing a garbage pickup, trash pickup again this spring?
Cleaning, green and clean.
Boy, I'll tell you what, it's nice to have the snow melt, but it is a mess out there right now. And I guess sooner the better. And I guess I'd encourage homeowners, landowners, walkers out there, take it upon yourself to do some cleanup out there, because it is a mess out there.
I agree. It'd be nice. Some people just took a little pride, and they don't have to wait for that to get started, so.
I think they set that it's, I don't have a calendar, but it's like the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth. It's a Saturday, April, and then it's for that week afterwards. So, that's when they, right.
I think their biggest concern is more snow coming to here than in March. Yeah. But, you're absolutely right, you know. I can't believe Chris hasn't been out in the yard cleaning it up. She doesn't watch these meetings. No. Is there any other new business we have to discuss?
I just got one thing, Mayor, just to kind of close up a little rumor going around town and to announce that I will be seeking reelection for Ward D, so.
Well, good. Okay. Anything else? Any liaison member reports?
Actually, I've got a quick one. It went out as a bill stuffer with the utility bills last week. But, the utility rates in Watertown compared to all the other large cities in eastern South Dakota, just incredible. We were by far the lowest. Pier was the next, ours, our electric, water, natural gas bill, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars for Watertown. Next closest was Pier, one hundred and eighty-three, all the way up to Yankton, two hundred and twenty per month. So, kudos to our utilities department.
That's exactly right. If you want, Ray could put that up on the board quick to show. All the Watertown people got that. What Glenn's really doing is telling all these outside towns, look at what we're doing. That's the deal, how well ours is run. There you go. So, it does, it really is, when you put it on a bar graph like that, it's pretty amazing, isn't it? Thanks, Ray. Any other liaison member reports? Any need to go into executive session? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion by Glenn, second by Randy. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.